Good evening. This is a special meeting tonight to review the, get an update on the strategic plan by Superintendent Carmine Peluso. I just want to welcome everybody to this strategic plan session, and I'm going to just turn it directly over to the Superintendent Dr. Peluso.
Thank you, President Elliott. Good evening to you, Vice President LeBron, board commissioners, families that are watching, staff, students. So we are continuing with our conversation regarding our strategic plan. And also today, because you know, there's, we're coming to you in bits and pieces, right? There's meetings going on throughout where we're meeting with our steering committee. And our steering committee, I just wanted to let you know, you have, which is also on our website, rcstdk12.org backslash plan. You'll see the steering committee, some additional information, all the PowerPoints that have been already done. But I just wanted you to also have here who is part of the steering committee, so that as we talk about it, you know who those members are, what those meeting dates are. And currently, we're also in a process of doing our community forums. We're getting out and having staff, families, all come to kind of give us feedback. Today's meeting is to bring you some of the feedback from the steering committee, as well as from others in the community members about our mission, our vision, as we move towards our goals. So with us again today is Aurora Laura. She's been kind of leading us through this process and working with everyone. So she's here to kind of give you and provide you an update, and also solicit some feedback. So I'm going to turn it over to her.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Peluso, and to the entire board for having me here today. My name is Aurora Laura. I work with Inside Education. Last time you met my partner, Nenika Bernard, she's not able to come today, but fortunately, I was able to be here to take you through the next steps of the strategic planning process. Today, we're going to finish the vision, mission, and core beliefs. What I hope is we end up landing on a draft version of those. And we're going to start talking about priorities. And then I know you guys have set goals, so we're going to just start to talk a little bit more about the meat of the strategic plan. Overall timeline, I just want to make, review it with everybody. We have had the steering committee meet every single month, and they're going to be meeting again next week to work on different pieces. And today, we're going to share with you some of their feedback and their ideas. We have also done a stakeholder survey, and I'm going to share the results of that with you today. And then we're in the process of taking different pieces out to the community to get ideas, to get feedback, so we can make any drafts that we have stronger. Our plan is to bring a final product to you in March, but we want to make sure we're including you along the way, so we get your blessing on any direction that we go. So here are just the things that we've been working on at each of the meetings. At the beginning one, we looked at sample plans, just to know what strategic plans look like, and what are the pieces that we'll be building. Meeting two is where we got their ideas about Portrait of a Graduate, core values, vision, and mission. And we brought some of those to you. We now have a little bit more feedback on them, now that you have, you've had some drafts. Now we're in the phase where we're looking at the data, and the survey data, quantitative data, and starting to identify what the, what the community, what they feel like some of the priority areas should be for the district moving forward. So we're going to share those ideas. And then after we set those, then we'll start to work on how we're going to achieve the goals of the district. And we're going to talk a little bit about that process later today. So to start with, we're going to go through the core values, vision, and mission. I'll show you kind of the draft of where we landed last time, the feedback that we got from steering committee and focus groups, and then we'll open it up for discussion on whether we want to make any changes, or what, what draft you want to go with, or are we going to start a different one. Okay. So core values, just as a review, they're the set of beliefs that drive all behaviors of the district. A vision describes what the district hopes to achieve or be in the future. Usually, it's short and aspirational. And then the mission articulates what's unique about who the district is, what the district does, and who the district serves. So starting with core values, of course, these are the, core values direct the behavior and decision-making of an organization's employees. This is the draft that we have from the last boardwork session. Student-centered, excellence, diversity, equity, and inclusion, relationships, and safety. So we shared this draft list with the steering committee and focus group so far. And here is some of their feedback. And some of these are changes, some of these are just comments. What they said about excellence, they just said, we want to make sure that applies to everyone, not just students, so staff as well. Some people said, instead of DEI, maybe put belonging instead. That word create, just creates a sense of community. So we actually heard belonging come up a few times. Yet another person said, this term feels a little overutilized, and feels like it's lost its meaning. So their suggestion was maybe accountability to equity would be stronger. Someone else, another group said, the term DEI feels safe. We want a stronger term, maybe something like anti-racism. And then we had another group share that we should add belonging to the end, making it DEIB, so diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging. Next, student-centered, I actually moved it to the top one. The core values weren't in order, but the, the community shared that they feel like they should be in order, or that they are even if they're not. So they just said, we wanted student-centered at the top of the list. Instead of relationships, they suggested maybe we call it partnerships. And they just want to make sure the community feels like they're part of whatever that is, really, uh, relationships. They want to know that the community is involved. There was a lot of discussion about safety. They said, safety feels like a coded term that could represent bias. Someone else said, safety should include restorative practices. So not just physical safety, but also talking about, you know, emotional safety and psychological safety. People said it looks different for everyone, so maybe community care should be the value. Another person said, safety feels harsh. Are we talking about safe places to support student learning, or are we talking about weapons, or just that kind of physical safety? So they said, maybe the term should be toned down. Someone else said, again, make sure we include emotional safety in, in whatever we choose here. And then, as a teacher, we know that students can't learn if they don't feel safe. We have to focus on emotional and psychological safety, not just physical safety. So you're seeing some themes. And then the last overall bit of feedback, most people said they're fine with the words. They just want to see how we define them, and that's the next step of the process. People just said, overall, we want to make sure the values are for everybody, and that we feel like they're for staff, and they're for students, and therefore, the entire district. And one other person said, maybe compassion is another thing we could consider adding as a core value. So this was all the feedback that we got from the steering committee and the focus groups that we've done so far. Based on your thoughts from the previous session, and the feedback we just heard, are there any changes that you'd like to make to the list of proposed core values?
So let me just open it up to anyone that wants to initially respond. Commissioner Malloy?
Thank you. And thank you so much for presenting and for this work. I loved the suggestion of moving student-centered to the top of the list. I would go a step further and change that to student outcome-centered. That's just what I'm feeling, but otherwise, looks great.
And just so you know, it was lower when we showed it to them, so I just actually moved it to the top.
Any other comments so far? Commissioner Simmons?
I like the student-centered, and, and I, I get what you're saying about the student outcome-centered, but I like student-centered because, beyond the outcomes. Like, we want them to produce outcomes, but there's so much more to that whole child. So student-centered kind of encompasses that for me. Excellence, I'll leave that there, because I had something for that, but I'll leave it at excellence. Diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging, I do like the addition of belonging, because I do agree, DEI is, for me, overutilized and tokenized at this point. It's said really nicely in a lot of rooms, but it's never really executed well in a lot of spaces. And then safety, I like the spelling out of safety a little bit, that emotional, psychological, and physical safety, being explicit about that is important, I think.
Thank you, Commissioner Simmons. Commissioner Griffin?
Yes, thank you, President Elliott. If you will, I don't see in the information here, you stating relationships. Can you give a little bit more on the relationships aspect as far as the core value? What are you trying to say in reference to relationships?
So this was one of the words that the board came up with. So would anyone from the board like to chime in?
Does anyone remember who, does, who put it up there?
I don't know who put it up there. The one thing I do recognize is that collectively, somebody correct me if I'm wrong, but collectively, we, we talked about the importance of relationships are the centerpiece of, of children feeling as if they belong in school. All of those things are based on the relationship you have with the teacher, the ability to go to that trusted adult, to have those relationships in the building are the cornerstone for a foundation of academic learning. But you, you have another point.
So couldn't we possibly, or, I'm sorry, couldn't we possibly, am I on here?
I'm sorry. Couldn't we possibly use, put relationship with student-centered? Could we possibly put it as one of the, of heading under super, student, I'm sorry, student-centered? Or do you feel that it really needs to be by itself? I mean, because are we talking about the same thing, student-centered relationship? Is it one of the same, or is it different?
I, I believe that from the original discussion, it was about relationships with students. But the reason it was just said relationships, I believe the board said, we also want to build strong relationships with families. We want to build strong relationships with the community. We want to build stronger relationships with our staff. And so I think that's why it was actually kept a little broader.
So mainly, you're saying like the dynamics of relationship, like you would say family dynamics, the relationships is the dynamic, dynamics of the relationship, in reference to other stu, the students, relationship with other students, teachers, what have you? Is that what you're saying?
I think it's more that we want to make sure the district is helping families feel really welcome, and building a strong relationship, that they're listening to the voices of teachers, and helping teachers feel comfortable, that they're, they're building strong partnerships with the community. So I do think it's kind of about building partnerships.
So I'm going to allow Dr. Peluso to expound on it.
So I just, Aurora, as we build through these draft core values, right, it wouldn't the next step be for us to kind of put some definitions and words behind this, to have some more meaning, so that, that people understood what exactly we mean by relationships, what we mean by excellence, what we mean by student-centered?
Yes, that is the next process. After this meeting, I'm just hoping to find, figure out, like, which five are we moving forward with? We will work with the steering committee and the cabinet to write the definitions of what these mean for our CSD, and we'll bring those definitions back to you. So some of that will be explained when we, when we talk together and decide how to write the definition. So we'll bring some more information. I just want to know, are these the words that we should write them for, or do we want to make any changes?
So let me just, I guess I'm a little surprised, and maybe we talked about this before, but now that particularly, what we got safety, and it may come under safety, but emotional health is what I'm also looking as a core value. Let me just have Dr. Peluso to respond to that.
So before you do that, can I talk relative to relationships, or?
No, no, no. Let him respond to what I'm asking first, please.
So I do think from the feedback and some, some of our conversations here, that we have to maybe look at that safety term, right? Safety, we feel, and from all our sessions, as a somewhat coded term at times, and what does it actually mean? So if we could change that language, I think we need to have that discussion here to take, if it's not safety, what is it that we would be looking to capture there?
And it may be a part of that. Commissioner Patterson, you wanted to talk about something aside from that?
Let's go back to relationships. Relationships versus partnerships. You know, relationships, and you really explained it earlier, you know, the different types of relationships. We can have a partnership with someone, but is it a true relationship? If we're talking relationships, that's very, very personal. So I don't think that, my thought is that we shouldn't consider calling it partnerships, maybe include partnerships in there. But the relationship, that word is key, you know, to everything that we're doing here, we should be doing and moving forward to in the district.
Thank you. And I'll make sure that when we work, when we draft the definition, that we hone in on that, if, if we move forward with that word.
Thank you, Commissioner Patterson. Vice President LeBron?
Thank you, President Elliott. I also just want to just point out, like, some of the feedback that we're actually talking about, looks like the steering committee also gave similar feedback in terms of defining each of these categories a little bit more, and so that they're not so broad. And I see safety came up a lot of what that looks like, because we all have different versions of what safety looks like, not only to us, but to our own families and students. Personally, I know you're asking for feedback. I would be good with these draft core values being the five that the steering committee and the group moves forward with, as long as they're better defined. And I do like the feedback from the steering committee. It's the same feedback I would give to further understand what safety looks like. And then I, for me personally, I just want to point out, because I operate a people-centered organization that is built first primarily on relationships. And first and foremost, you can't accomplish any outcomes without having good, strong relationships as first. So I value that a student-centered, I would actually ask that relationships be number one, because none of that happens without good relationships. Relationships with the staff, relationships with the students, with the families, the relationships we have with our community partners. Because I know over the years, lots of community partners have lots to say about their partnerships, really, and the relationship that they have with the district. And that's all.
Yeah, and I would just also add to what the Vice President has said about, if, if we can communicate that point to our community, and if they can buy in with that term with us, I think that's going to help us to do this work even more effectively with this, with this, because if, if the community sees that we're placing relationships as number one, and we've not been good with that as a district, but that, that's a part of the strategic plan now, the strategic framework, I think that that's going to resonate. And then if we do it, we've also got to be able to, we got to do it, and we've got to make sure that we're promoting this, that it is relationships, and that's one of, that's, that's taught with us, that we develop these relationships. So Commissioner Simmons?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Vice President LeBron said something that stood out to me. So I agree with fleshing all these out with the definitions, that's going to be awesome. But also making sure that as we talk about focusing on our families and students and community, that we also are very explicit about our relationships with staff, our safety with staff, what that, you know, what, we're inclusive of, of everyone connected to this district. So it's not a subpar conversation.
Thank you, Commissioner Simmons. Commissioner Griffin?
Yes, I just want to, I'm sorry, I'm going to get better with this, guys. But I just wanted to just, just say something. I was just trying to look up things as I, as we were talking about relationships, because I do think it's an important word. I just wanted to make, have a better definition of what we were looking at as far as relationships. But when I put in dynamics in, in a relationship, it comes up with trust, compromise, conflict resolution, and respect. So I don't know if that's helpful to us, but if we say dynamics in a relationship, or we say dynamics of a relationship, we also include those words of trust, compromise, conflict resolution, and respect, just to give it a little bit more insight into the word of relationship and the dynamics of a word, of the word relationship. So if that's any, if that's helpful to the group.
Commissioner Griffin, thank you. Commissioner Patterson?
Yes, just to clarify, you know, one point, at the beginning, you spoke relative to district goals, so we haven't finalized those yet, you know, so I just wanted to clarify that for the public. But, you know, when it comes to safety, I, having 27 years in law enforcement, don't believe that it should ever be toned down, especially in today's day and age. So you might want to take that back to the committee, that, you know, I don't, I don't think the, the public would want us to tone that down. They want us to speak directly to it, and what we're going to do to make our classrooms conducive to learning and safe. So when you also mentioned physical, psychological, and emotional safety, yes, they all tie in, so I do agree with that. And you spoke relative to it applying to the students and staff. But I also think what you put together here should apply also to the administration and to this board. Because as we talk about, you know, One Rochester, One R C S D, we're all included in that, so it should apply to us also. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Patterson. Dr. Peluso?
So, so I just want to be clear, the core values are permeated throughout the organization, right? This is what we believe is instrumental to us, no matter where, who, if family walks in the door, right? This is the expectations across the organization. These core values, I know you had mentioned going back to the committee for feedback, the committee has provided this board, and I, and as one of, feedback, right? What we have to do is finalize if these are the terms, where we have their feedback, now we have to say, this is what we're going with, and this is what we're going to move forward with. I just want, before we dive into definitions, because then we're going to clearly define these, come back to what we mean, with a lot of the terms that I've already heard, partnerships, relationships, all of those will be defined. I just want to make sure that these are what we're going to communicate to the community as what is going to permeate this organization.
Okay. So just clarify this for me, Dr. Peluso, when I mentioned about social, emotional, where is that going to be?
So that, you know, in my world, that would fall under safety, but I do think we've heard some feedback that safety has definite diff, different definitions to different people, right? And is, you know, what is it that we just want to be clear on, that we're saying when we say safety, so there's no misinterpretation of what we mean as a core value?
Thank you, Dr. Peluso. Commissioner Malloy?
Thank you. And thanks for the clarification, Dr. Peluso. And I'm comfortable with all of these, moving forward with that. And similar to what Vice President LeBron said, just as long as we have those clearly, or clear definitions for the community, but I'm very comfortable with these. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, great. So we have our words. We will, as next steps, work with the steering committee and cabinet to draft some definitions, using the ideas that we heard from you all today. And next time we see you, we'll bring back those definitions for you to take a look at. Okay, now we're going to move on to vision. The vision describes what the district hopes to achieve or be in the future. And these are typically really short, that people remember, and they are very aspirational. The more detailed stuff goes in the mission for what we're doing to achieve the vision. I do want to just bring back this slide, just so you can really quickly remember, these are vision statements from some very popular companies. We see that they're very short and aspirational. So we've got, you know, making the best possible ice cream, the nicest possible way, to make people happy. I'll just, I just wanted to make sure that you've seen these again, as we think about which draft to move forward with for vision. So I also wanted to share with you just some sample vision statements from other districts, how they approached it, just so you can kind of see just some different ideas. For Mooresville Graded School District, they said, creating a better community by empowering every individual to grow, thrive, and succeed. Maplewood Richmond Heights said- Maplewood Richmond Heights said, inspiring and preparing students to be leaders, scholars, stu-, stewards, and citizens who will thrive in a diverse and changing world. Chapel Hill Carboro said, our schools exist to provide experiences that empower, inspire, and engage. Durham Public Schools said, igniting limitless potential. Austin said, we are Austin's home for inclusive learning, high expectations for all children, high outcomes for every student. And L.A. Unified, uh, will be a progressive global leader in education, providing a dynamic and inspiring learning experience where all students graduate ready for success. So I just wanted to get in the mind, kind of, this is where we're going with, um, for the inspirational. So these, this is, these are the drafts that were created based on your feedback from the last session that we showed to the steering committee, and so we're going to share their feedback on this. We shared, we will create a high-quality educational experience that nurtures liberated thinkers, instills social and emotional balance, and ensures on-time graduation. The second thing, part, we showed them, we will provide a high-quality education that fosters liberated thinkers and cultivates socially and emotionally balanced high school graduates. So here's the feedback that we got, um, on the, those drafts. In the beginning, they just had some wordsmithing, you know, some words that they liked better, so they like create better than provide, they like cultivate over instill, um, they liked, or we prefer balanced high school graduates over the on-time graduation. And we, we made some drafts using this feedback, so we're going to show you that in a minute. Someone said, the tone of number one seems warmer than number two. Someone else said, number one didn't feel very inspiring. We heard a lot of comments about what does social and emotional balance mean, and they just, they weren't sure with that term, and so they felt like families might not know what that meant either. Um, another group was struggling with the word instill. The overall piece of feedback that we heard over and over, that's why I highlighted it, is that it should focus beyond high school, and they just want to make sure we're talking about getting students ready for college or careers, and just becoming contributing members of society and being prepared for their li-, life after high school. You know, they want the students to go on to do great things, and so they want to make sure it feels like something that's reaching beyond high school. Um, one group, uh, said, they preferred to say, we create instead of we will create. They like the term liberated thinkers. Uh, another group, but another group said they felt like it had a negative connotation, so we heard kind of different things on that. Uh, one group, yeah, stated liberation reminds them of oppression. The word nurtures might suggest deficit thinking, and instead of we will create or we will provide, say, we create or we, and we provide. So we took some of those ideas and tried to shorten them and incorporate them into some other versions for you to talk about, and we can, you know, if we don't like these, even go simpler and get your ideas. But option one, we create a high-quality educational experience that nurtures liberated thinkers, cultivates social and emotional balance, and prepares students to thrive in a diverse and changing world. Option two, we create a high-quality education that fosters liberated thinkers and cultivates socially and emotionally balanced high school graduates who are prepared for success in their futures. Option three, we provide an excellent education that helps students think freely, balance their emotions, and be prepared for college, career, or civic engagement. And option four, we offer an excellent education to create well-rounded, open-minded graduates who are prepared to thrive in life and participate in, in civic engagement. We also just got these, we shared these with you before, but these were just some other ideas that steering committee members came up with. Activating dreams and unlocking potential, creating healthy joyful spaces, meaning schools and programs for individual students so that they are prepared for life, ensuring all students have a high-quality education, reach their highest potential, and become contributing citizens or participate meaningfully in, um, society. And graduating students who are prepared for life through equitable access to high-quality education and student-centered support. So these are just some of the other ideas that the steering committee had. We don't have to go with any of them, but we want to just get those back on your mind. So I'd love for us to now talk about, based on the things that you've heard, what changes do we want to make, or do we want to narrow it down, and is there one that you like a little bit better, and what changes will we make to make it stronger? Um, so I'll put these drafts back up, um, just for you to look at, and I can go back and forth to any of the other slides.
So let me, let me just start off because, because I think this, really, let me just be, I think most of this stuff is boring, right? And what just came up to me is, in terms of the vision statements, that R C S students will impact the world, all right? But now, if I had to make a choice, I do like four better than, uh, the other ones, but, um, I just like something that's vibrant, thriving, you can catch it, you know, it's exciting, you know, so that's just where I am right now. So I'll open it up.
I will say, the steering committee was, was thinking that too, and they said simpler is better, um, so maybe we can kind of simplify and shorten.
Dr. Paluso, speak first.
I just want, I think the last time we went through this, we started talking vision and got into mission, right, and we lost vision, because a lot of this ended up coming from mission discussion. So, um, I'm open to really creating something that is memorable, right? You know, something that's different if we wanted to have that, you know, this was just what we did with the feedback that was provided from our last board session.
Uh, Commissioner Griffin?
Yes, I'm sorry for that outburst on President Elliott, um, because you were just spot-on about what you were saying, but I also feel that it's too wordy, um, too wordy, and it's not catchy. Um, some words that I don't see, one word that I think should maybe be in there that's not in there is empowering, um, our youth, um, or our, our children, however you would want to incorporate that, but I think empowering and diversity is a good word. We, these, there's so many key words that we can use, but one I think is very much, one word in particular is empowering, because I think once we empower our youth by giving them the tools that they need, they will be successful. So I think that this is just way too wordy for, for a vision statement, so I totally agree with President Elliott.
All right. Uh, Commissioner Simmons?
Yeah, that's, that's definitely what the chuckles were up here. We, we were laughing when we were looking at the examples and recognized how far down the rabbit hole we went. I think we were trying to figure out board goals, mission, vision, and solving world hunger all in one. That didn't work out well. So, um, you know, I like on the slide, what is it? There's a slide, I think it's slide 23, where it says, activating dreams and unlocking potential. I do think, like, that's what a vision statement is, just something that's really simple. But, you know, words mean something, and when you talk about activating dreams, it reminds me of, like, Dr. Bettina Love, dare to dream, right? Activating dreams, because when you activate the ability to dream in a child, they become unlimited, their potential becomes unlimited. So when you activate that dream, that's powerful, and I think it's about the energy we put behind that. And unlocking that potential is how you get to that baby at that classroom, that instructional core, that's where the potential tends to, tends to grow, and those dreams begin to manifest. So I like that one, and I'm open to other thoughts around it, but that's simple and it's powerful to me.
I'll just say, it was a student who came up with that idea.
All right. Commissioner Santiago?
Uh, I'll say personally, uh, my, my support goes towards, uh, exactly what Commissioner Simmons said. I'll be real with you beforehand, I was going to say, you know, we should tweak it, but after she just explained it, the way she just explained it, I'm like, yeah, that's it. Uh, that's it. But I think if, if there's a, a possibility of, of adding, uh, you know, educational purpose to it, uh, at the same time without losing the, the, the BAM that it has, um, that, that would be something that would be great to see.
Thank you, Commissioner Santiago. Vice President Lebron?
Yeah, I just want to also support Commissioner Simmons, um, support for activating dreams and unlocking potential. And from my perspective, I just want to explain, right? I work during the day with opioid-addicted homeless individuals, and we do a lot, everything from wound care, all types of stuff. But for me, when people walk through the door, I have a real simple message that hope lives here, no matter what condition and state you walk in through. And if I don't leave that impression on the individuals I'm serving, I know that they're not going to be able to take the next step and the next step and the next step. So for me, it really starts with just re, re-giving people hope and their humanity back, right? So we have a shower, we make sure that they're clean, if they have any wounds, we have medical come in and do the wound care. But it really, none of that is possible without them believing that they feel hopeful when they walk through my doors. And so to what Commissioner Simmons was saying, the power of words, we even have that sign, it's on our love, dignity, and respect, is how we give people hope back. Um, so, yeah, I love it, uh, activating dreams and unlocking potential.
So nobody likes my student impact statement?
Well, they don't like empowering.
Commissioner Malloy? Come on, Commissioner Santiago? Oh, yeah, Commissioner Malloy?
I, I want to agree with all of the sentiments that have been expressed already. I love activating dreams, unlocking potential, that, that's, that's fire right there. I'm using my kids' terms, sorry, they, they're saying fire for everything these days. Dinner was fire tonight, Mom. Yeah, um, I'll take it. Um, I also would like the idea maybe like empowering and inspiring in some way, if we could incorporate those terms, inspire, empowering and inspiring every student. I know that sounds kind of like vanilla or bland compared to the other one, but yeah, activating dreams and unlocking potential, that's powerful. Love it.
Commissioner Griffin, you have anything?
No, I, I think that, um, in, it's funny that you said a child wrote it, because I was, my, when I was, um, thinking about the vision and mission statements, I was going to ask you, I hadn't even wrote it down, um, why don't we get suggestions from the, you know, from the students to see what they thought? So that was one of the things I thought should come from them, because when you believe in your, if you write it, you believe it, you embrace it. So I thought that would, that would be ideal for them to be the ones to do the vision and mission statements. So I also agree, I would love to have empowering in there, but because, because a student wrote it, I'd accept it, you know, because I think getting it from another student, students tend to gravitate and embrace when another student does something. So, um, I'm good with it, if we don't need to add, if you don't want to add the empowering or inspiring, but I think it's, it's, it's an excellent phrase for a vision statement.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Patterson, you want to weigh in on this conversation?
Yes. Um, great conversation, um, unbelievable ideas, uh, by my colleagues that have come up, and I too, um, the activating dreams and unlocking potential, like, when that was just stated by my colleague, it kind of opened up my mind and thoughts to, uh, we being a majority minority community, not to say that, um, we should think any less of, um, you know, Caucasians or any other race or religion, um, in the district, but incorporating all their ideas. So when we talk about that quote and other quotes, it came to me like, I think our community would relate to, um, minority leaders quotes that we could also implant in here. Um, and, um, somehow I put quotes in relationships, but, but maybe what I was trying to say or think of at that point in time is that, um, and let, let me just go back to a statement that I, I wrote, um, a few minutes ago. Um, our school vision and mission must not be generic, but specific to our cultural identity and uniqueness. So I think that really says it all, you know, if we're able to, um, speak to the students or we're able to pull up some of our own, um, minority leaders quotes and quotes of others, you know, incorporate them into this, I think it would have more meaning, you know, to the general public.
Thank you, Commissioner Patterson. Um, all right. So, um, I think there's a directive, Superintendent Paluso, about making it exciting, and although you're not using my term, I'll just...
You got us started, and I do want, I do want to, I want to thank the board for that, for that direction, because it is, as you looked at the other ones, right? How do you, how does that motivate, I want a kid to come into the classroom and say, I want to do this, and I want someone to be like, you're going to be able to do this, and, you know, and that's, that's what I think the vision is, and this is, this is great, so thank you. I think we have mission next, and, uh, that's a little bit more of the granular stuff that we'll get into.
Yes.
Not as exciting.
Okay.
We're going to try to make it exciting.
Well, we ended on a good note, loved the discussion, um, and loved the direction we're moving in now with vision. Um, next, we're going to move on to mission. So the mission is the more granular one. It is articulating what kind of, who we are, what we're doing, and who we're serving in order to meet the vision for the district. So, um, wanted to share again some samples from other districts, just so you can kind of see how the other districts approached it. At Jackson Public Schools, we develop scholars through world-class learning experiences to attain an exceptional knowledge base, critical and relevant skill sets, and the necessary dispositions for great success. Uh, Maplewood Richmond Heights is an inclusive school district where students, staff, families, and community members are seen, heard, and valued for their unique backgrounds, cultures, talents, and beliefs. We support, educate, encourage, and nurture one another to reach our full potential in order to create a better community. Durham Public Schools said, Durham embraces, educates, and empowers every student to innovate, serve, and lead. Austin said, we prepare every student with the knowledge and skills to thrive in college, career, and life. And L.A. Unified, um, said, embracing our diversity to educate L.A.'s youth, ensure academic achievement, and empower tomorrow's leaders. We are L.A. Unified. So I just wanted to show you just some examples of how other districts approach this. Um, these were the drafts that we had based on your feedback from the last meeting. We embrace our diverse community and commit to providing educational programs that prepare all to graduate with a deep sense of empathy, a passion for equity, and a strong commitment to accountability. And option two, as stewards of Rochester's youth, we commit to creating a culture of academic excellence for all, a community of empathy, equity, and accountability that encourages the development of empowered students who are prepared to succeed beyond graduation. So we took these two drafts to the steering committee and the focus groups, and here's what we heard. Um, overall, a lot of people liked option two, but just felt it was too long. Somebody said, change empathy to compassion, um, maybe change, uh, that we like empathy, equity, and accountability, maybe leave out just that, um, as stewards of Rochester's youth part to make that one shorter. Uh, commit, put, take out, we commit, and just put, we create. Uh, some of the people said, there seems to be a little bit of dissonance between the vision and mission, and that's where they, some of the things we showed you before, I think now we're back on track with vision, but they felt like some of that should be in the mission, and so, um, they just said, we, we probably need to clarify these. The mission should include something about not only how we're preparing students, but maybe how we're addressing challenges as well. Again, they, people said this feels like, some of it felt like a vision statement. Uh, we should include something about individual and collective responsibility into our mission, and include that we're preparing students for college, career, and civic engagement. Okay, so we came up with a couple drafts, um, ones of your, using your ideas, and one that tried to make it a little simpler. We embrace our diverse community and commit to providing educational programs that prepare all students to graduate with a deep sense of compassion, passion for equity, and strong commitment to accountability. Option two, we create a culture of academic excellence for all, and a community of empathy, equity, and accountability that empowers students who are prepared to succeed beyond graduation. And option three, we are a diverse community that prepares all students to graduate with a deep sense of empathy, a passion for equity, and the knowledge and skills needed for success in their futures. So just want to have you react, and just any thoughts, any directions that we're leaning, um, just open it up for discussion.
Commissioner Santiago?
Yeah, I was looking at the, the sampled, uh, district mission statements, um, and when you see, uh, the L.A., the L.A. Unified School District, uh, where it says, embracing our diversity to educate L.A.'s youth, ensure academic achievement, and empower tomorrow's leader, leaders, we are L.A. Unified. I think that that brings a lot of pride, you know, to, to that district. Um, and even when reading a lot of these, uh, these other proposals, you know, you don't get that same feeling, and you know, when you read that, like, you, you felt the pride of, of, of the district, and, and even with some of the other options, I didn't really see much of that. So if there's a way that, like, we can find a way, you know, I know that, that, uh, the last one was supposed to be the, the cool one, but I think that we can still find pride and still find a oomph in, in our mission statement as we see, you know, the L.A. School District, uh, do. Uh, so, so that's something that, that I would recommend.
Thank you, Commissioner Santiago. Commissioner Malloy?
Yeah, I just want to agree, um, wholeheartedly with Commissioner Santiago. What about, we are One Rochester?
I say, we are R C S D strong.
Got One R C S D!
We are R C S D strong, or we are One... We are R C S D strong or we are ones R C S D, something, you know, that's been the move. We are one R C S D, whatever it is. But I think that wherever we can find that pride for our district, whether it's one R C S D, R C S D strong, R C and D, whatever it is, you know, I think that we can find the pride in it. You know, is really where, where, where we find pride in our district altogether, citywide, in our students and in our teachers.
Commissioner Simmons? Okay, all right. Did you finish, Commissioner Malloy?
Yeah.
All right. Any, any, any other comment, Commissioner Griffin? You don't have to say anything if you don't want to. You could come, you want me to come back to, I can go to Commissioner Patterson and you could come back. Yeah, you'd be happy to do that. Commissioner Patterson?
Yes, I'm a true believer if it isn't broken, don't fix it. So I like our new slogan that we have here, and I agree with my other colleagues. Just leave it the same and maybe add it, but I love option number two.
Yeah, and, and let me just, before I go to Commissioner Griffin, if she has anything, and you don't have to have anything right now, but let me just, I do agree with Commissioner Patterson. I do like the option two. And so perhaps if R C, one R S, R C S D is attached to that in some way. But yeah, even, you know, we've got this excitement around the vision. I think we could also, to Commissioner Santiago's point, can also have that kind of excitement with the mission that we're doing. I think option two is a great option for us to consider and some kind of way to, again, to Commissioner Santiago's point. You know, R C, R C S D, one R C S D, so.
Maybe add that to the end after.
Something like that, however it would fit, right? Yeah, however it would fit, yeah. I'm not exactly sure.
So we, we could take option two, work in the feedback that we just heard and, and add that to, to that, right? At least that gives us option two to, to come through if that's where the board is, is feeling most comfortable.
So how many people are interested in option two? Is that, yeah, Commissioner Griffin?
And I'm just, I'm just fiddling with this because it, the wordiness that you were saying. What if it's one R C S D? Oh Lord, I just missed, just went blank. One R C S D commits to creating. And instead of they wanted to take out the stewards, they were saying it was a little bit too wordy, right? And I kind of agree, but if we can take out, take it out and put one R C S D commits to creating a culture of academic excellence. Wait a minute, what it was was one R C.
Wordsmithed.
Right, one R C S D reinvest or reinvest or invest in this committed to creating? Something like that instead of the, as stewards of Rochester's youth, maybe?
So yeah, so I just want, the, the, the three that you're looking at now, we abbreviated based on the longer ones to shorten them up, right? Because they thought they were too wordy. I'm hearing now, what I want to see is language here, if everyone could, feels comfortable with two, then I could work through with some samples that include that, right? So that we could wordsmith it together.
Yep, 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 just the wordy. Yep, I agree. Now, number two.
Commissioner Malloy?
Thanks. And I also like option two, need to wordsmith it a bit. I like the focus being on academic excellence. I do think option three is pretty good too, but ultimately option two for me was better because of the academic excellence piece. But it is a bit wordy, yeah.
Commissioner Santiago?
Yeah, and I agree with option two also if, if we can, you know, like you said, wordsmith it and add some pride to it.
All right, okay.
One last question, President?
Commissioner Simmons, of course.
Should it be academic excellence, because that is something I love, or should it be academic achievement?
They're wordsmithed.
Yeah, I, I think excellence is a term that we've, we've really are trying to commit to, right? So we could, we could talk that through, but if the board has a preference, right? Excellence is permeating itself throughout, right? So I'd like to make sure that that's something that is as inclusive as well.
All right. All right, all hearts clear? Y'all gonna make me fall in love with y'all before it's over with. Thank you.
Okay, great. We have a direction on mission. I'm excited. So we'll work on number two, put the pizzazz in there to help people feel.
Not that I don't already love you all, just let me just put that on the table.
Okay, next thing I wanted to show you, as we pivot into the conversation to start to talk about district overall priorities and the things that the community really feels like we should work on improving over the next five years. I'll explain, go into detail, but let me show you the results of the survey. So we did an overall survey that had, hang on just a second. Nine hundred, nine hundred and eighty-eight responses. And this is how we can see it's sort of broken up into groups. Orange there, those are the Rochester City School District employees. Green are the people who are employees plus parents. Purple are community members. Blue are students. And red are the parents and guardians. These are kind of the numbers by level or percentages by level. So you can see we had representation from pre-K, elementary school, secondary schools, alternative schools, and central office people who filled out this survey. These are the overall number of, oops. Overall number of responses. We had nine hundred and eighty-five people take the survey in English, three in Spanish. Five hundred and eighty were employees. Fifty were employees and parents, were guardians. Two hundred and thirty were parents and guardians. A hundred and two students, twenty-six community members. And I'm going to frame what they said on the survey with this, this slide. The overall structure of a strategic plan is to come up with just the overall big picture buckets that the district should work on improving over the next five years. And then underneath, that's where the district has goals. And I know you all are setting the academic goals, the big overriding ones for the district. But in order to meet those, our departments need to work on some things. And so that's kind of where this, this is going. We've asked their opinion on just the overall buckets of work of, on, of things that they want to make sure the district works on improving over the next five years. Oh, and just so you know, usually what those priorities end up being are things that represent the main functions of a district. So there's usually a priority, definitely around, there's always one around academics, which is the one that you all have been working on the goals for. But a lot of times districts also have some goals around the human resources and making sure they're attracting, supporting and retaining teachers, social, emotional learning. A lot of districts work on improving that over the next five years. Operations and finance usually comes up a lot. Families and community engagement comes up a lot too. So those are just some examples that we shared. I want to show you what other districts have, and then we'll, we'll show you what the community said. So just some examples, in Jackson, their priority areas were strong start early learning, innovative teaching and learning, which is academics, talented empowered teams for HR, joyful learning environments for culture, and culture of accountability and excellence. Boston's priority areas were eliminate opportunity and achievement gaps, accelerate learning, amplify all voices, expand opportunity, cultivate trust, and activate partnerships. Alexandria said they want to work on system, systemic alignment, instructional excellence, student accessibility and support, strategic resource allocation, and family and community engagement. So we just want to show you some examples of how districts kind of pick their buckets of work. So this is really small, but what you can see is we gave the community, teachers, students, everyone, a big list of all the things that the district could possibly work on and had them pick the five things that they think are most important for our district to improve. And over on the, I know you can't see all that, but we just want to show you, like, people ranked different ones. Over on the right, these are the ranking order that we got on the survey. So the most important things to prioritize, the community said mental health and social emotional wellness, positive school culture and climate, reading by third grade, high school readiness, graduation and postgraduate success, and educational equity for all students. But other ones that were close, employee recruitment and retention, academic interventions, accelerating learning, student learning due to COVID-19, and early childhood education. So we just wanted to share with you some feedback of, of the ideas that your community had on things that they think the district can, can really work on improving over the next five years. So we had the steering committee look at that list. They looked at district data, and they came up with some draft possible priority areas. And we wanted to get your feedback on those to see if we move forward with setting, you know, identifying some actions in those pieces and in those different areas. We know that you are setting the academic ones, and that's what you've been working on in terms of the goals. But we wanted to just find out what are the other areas that we need to get better at in order for this district to meet those academic goals? So here's what the steering committee came up with. Inclusive, healthy, and joyful environments. Instructional excellence, preparing students for life. Recruit, grow, and retain staff. Strengthen school, family, and community engagement. And operational and fiscal excellence. So we wanted to get your thoughts. Do you like these priorities? Are there considerations for improvement? Obviously instruct, academic excellence, that's obviously the main thing that we are working on, but these are kind of the other pieces that they, that they wanted included. So I just want to open this up for your feedback.
Commissioner Santiago?
Yeah, I want to start off just by saying that, that the mental health and the social emotional wellness should have been at the top of the list, saying that, you know, that, that was the top ranking, you know, voted in, in the statistics. As we see in truly, the, the, the top five that was ranked, you know, through the survey is really the top five that should have been chosen, you know, if you look at this off of representation. But, but our district definitely does have to do better when it comes to our mental health services, our social emotional wellness, restorative practices, and de-escalation programs and, and tactics. So if this is something that, that the community is saying, something that obviously needs to be done better on, on our, in our district, then I believe that should really be at the top of the list, just as it was voted at the top of the list.
Yeah, and what I will say, the steering committee thought about that, and what they try to do sometimes is combine two into one title that would have like a focus on both of those.
Yeah, but, but we, but we have to focus on, on the students, you know, who, who are, who are saying that they need help. And I think that this is something that, that can't be mixed with other things. We have young people committing suicide. We have young people who are dealing with depression. This, this is true stuff, you know? I, I've dealt with it alone in my own experience of graduating. I've dealt with two friends who've committed suicide alone since graduating from high school. So this is something that we, we must, we must focus on. This is not something that we can mix with other things. It's something that's important for our young people. I mean, our students are crying for it. So I don't think that this is something that's okay to be mixed. I think that this needs to be focused on in our district for sure.
Dr. Peluso?
So I do want to say in the district priorities, that is the first one. If you look at the district priorities, inclusive, health, health, healthy and joyful environment, right? If that's not the language that you would like in terms of those, but that is the, the first priority that's there as well as the other, the other ones, right? You know, so if we need to wordsmith some of the language, we could do that. But don't think that, that was loud and clear through everyone's voice and one of the first things we put in terms of inclusive, healthy, and joyful environments.
Yeah, they explicitly said that's what we want in there. And then the culture too, the culture needs to be positive, but we want to make sure we have the right supports for students. And maybe we just changed the title to make it more explicit that we're meaning the, the social, emotional.
Yeah, because, because it become, it can become broad. And, and we're not focusing on, on the issues at hand. So I think that, that just being straightforward with this, with the, the language is important, you know, with these, with these priorities.
Yeah, or maybe we can break them back into two to represent their feelings.
Yeah, Commissioner Patterson?
Yes, so I also agree with that. But for number two, you had, let's see, on screen number forty-four, I think, mental health, correction, a positive school climate and culture as number two. And so as we know, you know, it's very difficult for kids to learn anything if we haven't created a safe environment for them. So I like that being number two. And number three, how about reading and comprehension by third grade? Which I think is, goes hand in hand with one another. What's your thoughts on that?
This, what I, this is what the committee had provided, right? And we could, we could give the feedback, but what I want to say is, these are what the, what the, the families, the community said was, was important, right? Now we have to kind of put those into priorities. That's why that last slide, not to go to here, we're trying to incorporate those in our priorities. What comes from these priorities are action plans that achieve this, right? You know, so in our action plan for instructional excellence, preparing students for life, you mentioned third grade. That may be one of the board goals that gets approved, like from the samples that we've done. In there will be strategic action plans for implementation with that, as long with KPIs of interim benchmarks that go in there as well. So these are our global district priorities where there becomes implementation plans and action items underneath each of those.
So I just want to clarify, because I'm, I'm not clear. You know, so I'm sorry, but.
Don't keep asking.
So again, reading and comprehension for me is very, very important that be next to one another. So it's, it's very clear, you know, to the public and our administrative staff and things like that. So are you saying that just the word comprehension would preclude you from, you know, making this part of, what are we in the mission?
No, so this is, these are district priorities.
District priorities, so.
So it would, instructional excellence is our district priority, right? You, we've already talked about some board goals that, that fit under instructional excellence that will fall into here. But we have, let's just say from what we've talked about, ninth grade credits, right? We've talked about our math, we talked about some in ELA. There also are going to be some other work around instructional excellence that are going to support that. And there's going to be other departments that need to do some things on goals as well that may all be included in this plan. So instructional excellence is that big priority. From under there are going to be goals, KPIs, action plans, all to meet those. So what we don't want to get with the priorities is so specific. We want these to be larger, and then in there will be the goals that will come under there. So if you take a look at that slide forty-six, that slide forty-six kind of gives that outline of what it would look like.
Okay, I can go with that.
Thank you. Commissioner Griffin?
Sorry, yes. About the mental health and social emotional wellness, yes, that is a big area of concern across the board nationwide. But I do believe that a lot of our mental health and our social emotional wellness, those issues come from the family dynamics and not, and that there's a lot of, lot of issues with our children because of the family dynamics and because of the illiteracy. So I think that, that com, that compounds the mental health and the social emotional wellness with the lack of fundamental skills that the kids have in the district. I think that once we incorporate and build up a lot of these, a lot of concerns as far as the family dynamics and the, we will see a decrease in the mental and social illnesses that the, that the children are having right now in the district. That is just, that's just for me personally. I think more, the more we empower our youth, then, then the better, the less mental illness we will have. I think a lot of kids are struggling with the illiteracy, you know, with not being able to read. That becomes a mental challenge. And I think personally in my life, I experienced, experienced it with my children because they shy away. They don't want to, they don't want to do their work because they don't know how to read. So it becomes a mental thing. And then, you know, if you, if it further breaks down, then that's when the kids go into the social, emotional, the ment, all of that. It just compounds the issue. So yes, mental illness is a big issue of concern in, in, in our city, but it also comes from the lack of the family, with the family dynamics not being where they are and we not knowing exactly what's happening at home, along with the reading skills. And we also have to look at the fact that there's a lot of things that are absent in the school systems, like we say, sportsmanship. Things are these things that kids are lacking that is also making them choose other ways of survival. And then those other ways of survival also impact their social and their emotional and their mental state of mind. So we, we have to look at the broad spectrum when we're saying the mental health and social emotional wellness. That's just my thoughts though.
Right, thank you, Commissioner Griffin. Commissioner Malloy?
Yeah, thank you. Looking at the draft priorities, I, I agree with these. I'm happy with these, except just to Commissioner Santiago's point. Obviously, I think mental health, social, emotional needs to be up at the top, which evidently it is. I'd be really help, comfortable with these if we could provide, as you said, the, like a clear explanation right next to them that's visible on whatever goes out to the public, so that they have a clear idea of what that entails.
Thank you, Commissioner Malloy. Commissioner Simmons?
I too agree.
I'm looking at the mental health and social emotional, the positive school and climate and culture, based on the graph that you showed, reading by third grade. And when we talk about reading, once we get all the definitions fleshed out, it will show that reading is comprehensively decoding vocabulary, all of those things inclusive of reading, and so it'll be important that we flesh that out. But as far as the strategy map, I love the way that the strategy map is laid out, and so once this is completed, I would love to see all of this populated in that same type of layout, and apparently that's what you're planning to do. And so again, when I look at this particular graph based on community priorities, they really align with a lot of the board goals that we came up with. So as long as this language shows that direct alignment and is, you know, very clear, I like it. I like it. And I can't wait to see the KPIs and how we spell it out from there, because it's one thing to say it, it's another thing to do it.
So I would just sort of add that I think one of the, what I've noticed in this, that it is, the survey responses is employee-heavy. And when you look at, you know, students or communities, particularly in communities, a little light, and I think that's the, probably the primary issue that I have with it, is that it is employee-heavy, as opposed to being community or parent-heavy. So I would just want to point that out, and as we move into this work even more, that we, while, you know, of course, our employees are important, but we're doing this work for our community and for our families. And I would have liked to have seen more surveys from our families and our community. Vice President LeBron?
Yeah, I just want to also point out, though, that we do actually have a number of staff who are also parents in the city and in this district, but we don't, our own systems do not sometimes allow for staff to identify first as a parent. But we, our systems, do not allow them to identify as a parent before they identify as an employee. And I do, and that has happened, right? We don't, even in the plaque bylaws, at some point, we don't allow them to hold, we didn't allow them to hold leadership positions because they were an employee. So I just want to point out, and I hear what you're saying, but I also think, at the end of the day, we're doing this for the community, but it's our staff that actually have to buy into this to roll it out, because they are the direct service providers in front of those students every day. And I do think in the past, this district has sort of had a more focus on what the community is calling for versus the actual rollout implementation of the educators and the staff that have to do the direct service. So I would say all that to say, while I agree with you that obviously we need more parent guardians to be identified, and even students, because of 102 out of thousands of kids that we have, I do think there would have been a different way to do this. Surveys are hard, and this community is surveyed out. There's a thing in this work called surveyed fatigue, and I highly believe that this community, and especially this district, people are surveyed fatigued from R C S D. I want to uplift that. But I will say, I do think there's still opportunities. I know you guys help focus groups, maybe something where you're also tabling at some of our events that are happening at schools, because I went to some school events this, you know, in December, and schools were packed, and I was like, we just missed an opportunity to table. Like, we, this down, Central Office should be at all of the school events, so that we're tabling for whatever, whatever's going on this month, that we need that engagement, or just engaging to say we're part of Central Office or the Office of Parent Engagement versus them only showing up for special events or events that Central Office has coordinated. That's the type of partnership I would like to see, because those, for me, were all missed opportunities to engage families, not centered around trying to get them to come to do a survey, but we're there, and because we're there at their event, they can take a survey if they choose. We also need to start incentivizing, because people are surveyed fatigued, but that's just makes no sense.
Yeah, no, I appreciate all of that, right? We do have multiple focus groups going on. We will be at a plaque event on Thursday, gathering feedback for this, and we also had scheduled some time with the Children's Agenda Very Important Parents to get, they're getting their group of parents together so that they come tomorrow, so that they provide their voice. So we're actively trying to get to parents, because we know that putting a Zoom link out, telling them to come, sometimes, you know, life happens, and it's not the right on their list or the top list of things. So we're going to go to them with plaque, as well as the Children's Agenda Very Important Parent Group.
All right. Commissioner Patterson, you have something?
Yes, I think that we have to do, and I say we, have to do a much better job on a PR campaign for CTE, Career and Technical Education and Skills. I'm looking here on the chart, it indicates only 14.4% there, and, you know, that's much too low, you know, for a society that's really morphing, you know, into great jobs and benefits for our students. So somehow, you know, we do have to get these surveys to our students to see exactly, you know, what they want, but at the same time, we have to do a better job, maybe a PR campaign relative to the jobs, multiple jobs that are out there, well-paying jobs with benefits. For some reason, you know, it's not getting to our students that these jobs out there are out there, and that the number of jobs, what type jobs they are, you know, maybe bringing in another workforce, you know, so they can see them, you know, and, you know, listen to them directly. But I just think we have to do a better job in that area. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Patterson. Commissioner Griffin?
Thank you, President Elliott. Dr. Peluso, you referenced speaking with the parents and the Children's Agenda. My only concern would be, what about the parents we're not, we're not able to connect with? How are we connecting with those parents? Because those are the ones that we need to reach, we need to reach, and those are the ones that are concerned, because we have a lot of young parents, and those young parents are working and working a lot of hours, a lot of them, and they're not home. How are we reaching them? Those are the ones that are lost right now, that we need to bring back into the district and let them be a part of. So what is?
So there are other Zooms and other parent focus groups that we're holding. I'm just saying, if we're not getting parents to attend those, we're also going to go to some families as well, right? You know, so there are multiple Zooms. We will do whatever we can. If we have to add other focus groups, we'll add other focus groups just to make sure that our parents have the opportunity to provide voice if they so choose in this, right?
Okay, last question. Statistically, how many parents are you reaching out to? How many, in number-based, how are you?
As, all of them, right? We're putting it on our social media, we're putting it in our, every newsletter, every communication that goes out, right? So it's been, it's been put on all of our social media sites, so that anyone that sees it, wants it, through our newsletters, through our communications, robocalls, all of that, for parents to kind of know that they have this option if they so choose.
What is, are you getting a great response? What is your feedback?
So our first parent focus group, I think, is coming up, so we, I don't know yet in terms of how many people are going to log into the Zoom at that time. So after that, I could provide some more information about how many families and how many parents we actually hit through our Zoom, through our plaque, and through our very invested parents. I think I may have said that wrong the last time, but our very invested parents throughout communication with the Children's Agenda as well.
And to, just one last thing, and to Vice President LeBron's point, going, when we go to the games, why not bring information to these games and to other events? So that would be lucrative in handing out the information there as well. If, you know, people are going to the events, we can have that information in hand ahead of time. That is something that should be done consistently, because that is something that would be, get a better response, because it's in hand, you know? We don't always, we don't always, they don't always read their, the mail. They don't always, you know, they put it to the side. So we have to use all avenues, and I think a sporting event or that sort would be great.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, well, thank you so much. Appreciate that we've got kind of your blessing on moving forward with some goals under these areas, and we look forward to seeing the ones that you set for academics. So next steps, I do want to share with you, we are meeting with the steering committee next week on January 18th, and what we're going to do with them is, we are going to go ahead and work on the definitions for the core values to bring back to you. We are going to work on selecting words for the portrait of a graduate to share with you, and we are gathering feedback in the focus groups right now, so we're sharing that feedback with the steering committee to have them generate some ideas to give to you. And what we're going to do next is take those priority areas and work on setting some goals and strategies, sort of filling out the chart. You all have the academic section, but we want to make sure that our other departments that are represented there are setting some goals around the things that we heard from parents, where, you know, parents and community as important. And so making sure we've got mental, you know, mental health and wellness included in there, making sure there's a goal somewhere around, you know, reading by third grade. Well, that's you all. But so anyway, we're going to flesh out the chart and bring you more details and meet next time, and so we look forward to sharing the work of the steering committee and cabinet next time we see you.
Let me just have it to end with the state monitor, to see if the state monitor has any reaction, any words to say.
I think this has been a great process, a lot of feedback from the stakeholders. I appreciate the discussion that the board is having this evening, because it shows that you're working together to improve student achievement in the district and to move the district in one direction, and again, that is to increase student achievement, student center. So it's great.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Laura.
Aurora.
Aurora, thank you. So this meeting ends, and so general counsel, I need to get a motion in order to close the meeting. So is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Moved by Commissioner, Vice President LeBron, seconded by Commissioner Malloy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So we'll take a five-minute break or so, and then come back for the Community and Intergovernmental Relations Committee. Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody, and welcome to the January 9th, 2024 Community and Intergovernmental Relations Committee of the whole. We are here today to have some conversation about our legislative agenda that we will be presenting at our Legislative Breakfast in March. We are
I will open it up for any questions that you may have.
Do we have any questions from the board, President Elliott?
Yeah, I didn't, I was trying to listen to the governor's state of the state today, but it got cut off on me. So what was some of her proposals around education? And can we align whatever she has, is proposing with our legislative agenda?
So I was unable to view that. I do have the transcript from it.
Yeah, and I'll tell you that it was, you know, kind of that curriculum base that we were speaking about the other day of changing the curriculum as far as reading into, I believe it's called phonics.
Back to basics is what she's calling it. And so what Governor Hokel is hoping to see, can I speak? I'm sorry, I'm just, I kind of jumped right in. Sorry about that. Back to basics, and it is focused on the decodable phonics and the science of reading. Wanting to see training for educators around that and also having our curriculum aligned. And I've been speaking with state senators, assemblymen. There's a lot that is going on beyond, around this in Rochester right now. And so that is, you know, definitely my passion and something I would like to see us align with as far as literacy.
Do we have any other questions or comments? Vice President Elliott? Vice President LeBron, my apologies.
That's okay, that's okay. Yeah, I actually was gonna discuss that the governor's program is going to come with funding for training and staff PD because the goal is to retrain teachers on teaching phonics and back to phonics. So there is gonna be funding for R C S D for that specifically because the formula used is gonna focus on high-knee districts in the state of New York. We're one of them. Funding is coming. I want to talk about two big pieces, though. So today, the governor also approved the 1115 waiver, finally, and that comes with a lot of money, too. I would just say, I do think some of these things could align with Medicaid dollars. And I want to point out that we have our own Medicaid person in-house, and he has come here multiple times to present. We need to loop him in because he is the direct person working with Medicaid and the state of Medicaid and our most knowledgeable staff in-house around that process and the waiver. And we would be foolish not to utilize him as the expert in-house. So I just want to put that out there because the amount of money that we're talking about is insane. So Finger Lakes is gonna be putting together a session for agencies to sort of come in, understand what was approved, what categories, how people can apply. And I definitely know that R C S D will also be eligible to TEP and apply for the 1115 waiver. Hundred percent support the pre-K funding, but I have to also add that we have not increased CBO's pre-K reimbursement rate since we've implemented it district-wide. I don't know, but it has not increased. And since 2020 and COVID and the current recession, they, as nonprofits, also are feeling the squeeze of the current recession. And as we move forward, there was a number of increased costs that they also had to eat out of pocket in order to continue their CBO-based pre-Ks. And so this year, I know we'll be advocating if this were to come through, regardless if this comes through or not, I definitely want to figure out a different formula internally for CBOs because even if we gave them a 3% increase, the reality is inflation was 17%, and they were already behind from two decades ago of reimbursement rates for pre-K students. And so I would be amiss if I did not, you know, advocate for that in your advocacy for pre-K, including special education. But any pre-K CBO needs to have a rate increase. So, thank you.
Before I go back to President Elliott, do we have any other comments from anybody who hasn't said anything yet?
Just real quick, I was gonna say, yeah, so I love the mental health that she's leaning into. That's a lot of money. I don't know if it's a lot of money for the literacy, like $10 million for that. I don't know what that's gonna accomplish. It's saying 20,000 teachers, but, so I would love to see more. Like, we really need to lean in on that. That's like a nice Band-Aid, but it's not, it's not the cigar that we need. So that, the mental health and, I'm sorry, filled with euthanasms and all that. Can't even talk. But I lost my train of thought.
Commissioner Simmons, if I may.
Yes.
Last year, there was a set aside of $10 million per district as part of the foundation aid allocation. And so one of the things that we've been advocating for is that we do not have a mandated set aside. So the $10 million that you're referring to from the state, I am waiting to see what the budget release looks like because I'm wondering if they're gonna have another mandated set aside for foundation aid dollars.
Yes, that, yes, thank you for that. And then are we, were you also, Vice President LeBron, talking about the school-based health clinics as well when you were talking? Okay.
I just want to clarify, yes. The 1115 waiver, that is one area that it would cover, you know, costs right, even right now. But I also think pre-K special education could go under the waiver, just so everyone's clear because these are reimbursement and reimbursable services through Medicaid. And this is why I said we need our own, we have our, an internal Medicaid expert who has been a part of the 1115 waiver conversations, super knowledgeable. And I know that this is a whole other world, but this other world is directly tied to the families we serve, the services that they need, and we need to figure out how to make that connection. And this is what Congressman Morelli has been talking about and Wade Norwood with systems integration. This is it. This was the push to fund these things so that a school district can figure out how to partner and figure out, hey, we are eligible for reimbursement over here, not just through education dollars. So Superintendent Peluso, I would love to have you at the meeting as well. I will make sure you get that info, but I will, I definitely want our internal expert there as well. We'll have a side conversation.
President Elliott?
Thank you, Chairman Santiago. In reference to charter schools, I'm told that Buffalo has a moratorium on charter schools. And I'm wondering if we should consider introducing a moratorium on charter schools in the Rochester area. So, you know, that's something, you know, for further discussion, I think. But I think that we should look at, if that's, if Buffalo has done it, then I think that that's.
And I know that there's been, there's been opportunities for that. So this, this is something that we can have further conversation on, you know, in the next meeting, possibly putting this in a presentation. Do we have any other comments, any other questions? If not, has everybody had a chance to look at the 2024 legislative priorities? Commissioner Malloy?
I just wanted to piggyback on what President Elliott said because I've been calling for a charter school moratorium for a few years now. And I would love for us to look into that. And so that's up for discussion. I can't say that I really understand some of the set asides. And so I'll need to be educated on those set asides under foundation aid. But to also piggyback on what Vice President LeBron was saying about setting aside, I think this is what she was saying, setting aside funds for professional development for literacy. What about setting aside funds for smaller classroom sizes at, you know, grades K through 2? That's how kids learn to read, when they're not in a classroom with 25 other kids. But if we have smaller class sizes that can be funded somehow through the state.
Superintendent Peluso?
So just to answer the set aside question, when the governor puts out the budget last year and she increased foundation aid, made foundation aid fully whole, there was a set aside for learning loss or reading, whatever it may be. And what, from our lens as superintendents, when you provide the foundation aid, there really shouldn't be any set asides. That should come through the budget process. So if you're giving the money to fully fund us through foundation aid, there really shouldn't be any set asides to that. So sometimes they provide funding, but then say, you can only use it for this. And, you know, as, and it may be right to use it for that, but it's more a philosophy in terms of the budget is the funds that you give us and then we'll build the budget. Don't, don't put barriers on how we could, how we could use those funds.
Okay, thanks.
So, so my question is, is this something that we are thinking to add to the agenda as far as with the, with the new curriculum that's being required? Are we requesting more funding? Are we saying that that funding is not enough? Or, I know Commissioner Simmons, you had, you know.
I certainly want to see the literacy piece. I'm talking driving hours and reading and just learning. Like, I think, well, after I'm off the school board, I'll be leaning into literacy. That's how I feel about it. And his, so yes.
Yeah.
We need that on the agenda to answer your question.
Okay, and if we can kind of look at, into, into what's already been promised by the governor and kind of, in the next meeting, have that conversation on, on what, what are we gonna advocate for on our end? Is there any other comments? Commissioner Patterson?
Yes, as Commissioner Malloy indicated, I want to second that. I think we should have some conversation around smaller class sizes. I really think we should think about that. It's very difficult for, you know, a teacher to be able to give 110%, you know, to 30, you know, kids in a classroom. But if we can think or have some discussion surrounding, especially now that we have the, you know, the, the buildings before we give them away or they're sold to the city or whatever it is, I think we should have a discussion as a board relative to, you know, class size and lowering it. Thank you.
So I, I just.
Superintendent Peluso?
Thank you. So I just want to, we, we have contractual class sizes that we, that we go. So we don't have class sizes of 30, so I don't want that. But I do want to say that when we went through with an MOA for teachers, we also did cap the class sizes to be as well in that MOA at a small amount in an agreement that I had made with, with the union. So we did cap it as best we can. I know that there's a desire potentially for lower class sizes. I do want to say that the governor started this presentation by saying, we're financially going to be in a tough place, right? This isn't gonna be an easy budget. So I don't know what she's going to be promising in terms of these funds. What we have to be careful of is unfunded mandates, right, in a lot of places. And I think from literacy, she's also invested in some money for colleges to make sure that they're including literacy instruction with their teacher certification programs, right? And then as a district by 2025, and I just kind of, you know, the document's 180 pages. I kind of did a little bit of a search today. It's that we have to certify that we're providing phonics-level instruction in our schools and that we're training our staff. So we have to, there's a certification that we're gonna have to do with 2025. But a lot of this will probably fall on the districts to make sure that they're doing.
A super.
Let me, so I'm gonna come down the line. We'll start with Commissioner Griffin, Commissioner Malloy, then Commissioner Simmons.
Thank you, Commissioner Santiago. Couple of, couple of questions because people were speaking in reference to smaller class sizes. We do have a teacher shortage. So I, I agree that we should have smaller class sizes. But also, where are we gonna get the teachers from? And another question is, are we going to look into getting more, more teachers that are black and brown, more Latino, more diverse in our, in our, in our, in our school system? If we are looking for smaller class sizes, I would definitely want to look at that as well. That is one thing. And then also with the, with the technology, you were saying that more equipment is needed, up-to-date equipment. Would that, would that be like the, like Google Class or whatever? The, the actual pads that the kids take home? Because I think, me personally, I, I would rather we get away from all of the laptop-type of things for the kids, especially at a young age, because I don't think that they really use them like they should. And I don't think that it's feasible for a learning tool. So is that what you're referring to? Hello? Yes, are you referring to the, are you referring to the laptops and things for the students? What are you referring to when you're referring to the technology aspect?
I am referring to laptops.
I personally think that there's a lot of loss with the laptops with the students. I think that sometimes we, we waste a lot of money when it refers to the technology with students. We need to probably put a cap on that and make sure that it's given to a level where they have responsibility. So that, that is a little bit of a concern with me. And at what level are we giving these at? I don't believe that at, at certain levels that the kids should have that Google Classroom. I think that is shying away and taking away from what a teacher should be able to do in that is teach. So that is just, that's my thoughts on that.
Absolutely. Do we have any response from Superintendent Peluso?
Nope. I, I would just say that when we're talking about technology, if you look at this legislative priority, it's also talking about, you know, cost of risk with cybersecurity, right? Some of those additional things that we're faced with. We've seen districts that have been taken hostage, literally, right, you know? And so the, just some worry about that. And now that I think, you know, insurances are more reluctant to provide, companies are more reluctant to provide insurance coverage for those types of situations, right? We need to make sure that if there are things that it doesn't bankrupt a district, in essence, you know, pay for, for us to get what is deserved when things are taken from.
Yeah, I wasn't talking about that, that aspect, just on the aspect of the technology that the system's giving to the children and they're not being responsible. And they say they lost them and really, we're giving them back to them again and again. And I think that we find that, that there really is a loss with us, not with them.
Got it. Yep, thank you.
Financially.
Commissioner Malloy?
Just to get back to the teacher and staff shortage legislative priority. So I'm gonna always advocate for smaller classroom sizes, but more specifically, reading teachers at the lower grade levels. So it's not just about creating smaller classroom sizes, but actually, and not just providing professional development. Not every teacher can teach literacy. I'm a social studies teacher. Just getting an extra certification doesn't make me a reading teacher. And so that investment or focus in that investment on actual reading teachers at the lower grade levels is something that we should advocate for, in my opinion. So thank you.
And I also, you know, question on, on, on both ends. Are, are these positions that's already open? Do we already have reading teachers for like first, second, and third grade? Whoever wants to answer.
What, what I want to refocus us on, right, are these our legislative priorities?
Yeah, and so this is, so that's why I was asking.
You know, what we're talking about is how we use our budget, right? And how we use our, that's, that's a budget, when we get into budget prior, budget conversations. What we want to focus on now is where do we want to make sure that when we're advocating to our delegation, when we're advocating to the commissioner, when we're advocating, what is it that we want to make sure that we want to be clear in our funding, right? Not.
Governor Hokel is calling for this increased focus on literacy statewide.
She's asking for more literacy, yes, absolutely.
Make that connection.
And it could be to make sure, if we want to look at a legislative priority to make sure that that doesn't become an unfunded mandate, right? That should be an area that we could kind of, you could look at from a legislative priority. I think everyone needs to spend some time kind of digesting what she said today as well to see exactly what it is that she intends to fund. And we won't really get a sense of that until our January budget comes out as well, right? You know, so, but I just want to keep us here that it may be just that, like, that it's not an unfunded mandate with, with reading, with the reading initiative.
Commissioner Simmons?
Thank you. This is good conversation. And, you know, and I, I agree. I love the idea of small class sizes and I'm gonna try to stick with the priorities, the legislative priorities. I do want to comment on the reading teachers because we know that reading teachers alone will not solve systemic reading issues in a district. So I know that's not where the conversation is going, but I just want to kind of put that out there. So if we did go down that road eventually during budget season, if we start talking about that, hopefully, we are talking about using systems-level interventions and things of that nature. Back to the legislative priorities. Did, did you get a sense, Superintendent, that Governor Hokel mentioned something about Ls and students with special needs in the literacy piece as well? I felt like I heard something like that or read something like that, but, because I, I want to see that as well.
I don't actually, I don't recall reading that. But like I said, I did a, it came out at like, I got it in my hands around 1:30. I did a quick read to it today, right? I think we saw reading, we saw mental health, right? We saw Medicaid and reimbursements. We saw housing in there as well beyond, you know. So those are some of the things.
The big buckets.
The big buckets that I saw briefly. I don't remember if I saw anything specific to special education. It's in Ls.
Thank you.
Remarks from our state, Madam?
Thank you, Commissioner Santiago. In the message today, I did not hear the governor talk about special education or ELL students. There was a discussion about the $10 million for the science and reading, but that is for NICEP. That is gonna go to continue to provide professional development for teachers. I mean, 20,000 teachers, when you look at New York City only, there are more teachers than that. So there's not enough money there. So the district needs to continue to be proactive and to take this priorities at the state level to talk to your delegation because it was not included. Again, we have to wait to see what comes in her budget presentation, but it was not included in there today. There was a lot, a lot of money included for swimming in New York State, like $60 million, but nothing about other areas.
Yeah, that's what I was saying. $10 million is nothing.
I kind of also want to kind of make remarks on, on also, even after we create these legislative agendas, also following through with it with our advocacy. And I know that we have associations that, that we are subscribed to, but I think that, that on our end, we can also advocate for things that matter to us as a district because nobody can represent us like us because, because our student matter, our students matter to us. Commissioner, Vice President LeBron?
Thank you. I do think under ELL, we might want to consider an ELL asylum seeker category for education. So right now, currently, Daco has the contract. There is a local vendor here, CBOs, that has the contract for the resettlement, case management for all the asylum seekers. And the way that it works is New York City is a right to house. So they have to house you. It's weird because I'm from New York. Y'all know I'm from the Bronx. There's lots of homeless people in the Bronx. But you do have a right to be housed. And because of that right to house, New York City is funding the asylum seekers who are coming here for the relocation, housing, food, and other expenditures because individuals are not eligible for federal benefits. But I say that because the county gets that reimbursement for the resettlement here. Not, not directly. So I want to be very clear because I know there's a lot of confusion about all of who's getting money. Monroe County is not pocketing all this money because all these asylum seekers are coming. But Monroe County will be responsible once they, their applications are approved and they start their process for any other benefits that they may need once they're eligible after a year and so forth. But no one's talked about the educational cost that is attached to that. And this is not just ELL. And I want to point out that for some of these families, they have literally gone through the most horrific things you could possibly imagine, escaping their, their situation just to seek asylum. And so, and I do think it comes with an additional cost to this community for mental health and support services as well. And the difficult piece is the language barrier. There are additional costs when you're bilingual. And that's why I tell my bilingual people, y'all better charge more money if you work in a job. Don't, don't translate for free. But I do think that there is an additional cost even beyond a traditional ELL for an asylum seekers. And we should be advocating to get some funding for that transition because it's a greater hardship, I believe, as well for them here. They're not eligible for food stamps. They're not eligible for housing assistance. They're not eligible for Medicaid. And so in order to get some of these basic needs met for individuals, it is going to take a strain on the resources that are already strained for this community. And I hate pending one group struggling with another group struggling. And I think we have to just make room for both. But we can't make room for both if the state is not funding and looking at this as traditional ELL students because they're not. And so I, that's the one piece I would ask the administration to potentially consider expanding the ELL piece and singling out asylum seekers because for those students, there is no district social worker calling the county to do a SNAP application. That is gonna require more work for our staff to figure out where to pull resources for these families. That's just the reality, unfortunately.
Do we have any, any other comments or President Elliott?
So Dr. Peluso, under technology, the language that says, we hope to make a shift from relying on grant-type programs and establish a sustainable revenue model to support the one-on-one initiative. Can you talk more about that?
So we, we have to go for and replace computers every four to five years, right? That's the window in terms of where we are. Smart bond money has been used historically to utilize technology and replacement technology. That money is drying up and we won't have access to funds to replace technology. So I believe, you know, for our spans, we, you know, technology, and we're gonna continuously replace technology to have access to those funds. Smart Bonds Grant has been what's been used historically. We then fell on some ARC to kind of help with that. But as those things dry up, technology funds will be limited and will become a fund expenses for us to sustain and replace computers.
But how will it be sustained? What does that model look like, Dr. Peluso?
Well, it, it won't be, it will be out of our A-Fund budget. It will be out of our general foundation budget to, to do this unless we have something that's sustainable from a technology grant, smart grant, or something to kind of continuously be able to replace computers.
But you don't have, but so what's the, what, give me an example of what that looks like. I mean, when, when you say sustainable revenue model, I, I guess I need to understand as an example of what that model would be.
Continuous funds from either the smart bond expenditure, right? Smart bond replenishment, right? We're using smart bonds to replenish technology currently, right now. So as, when that money dries up, there is nothing to, there is nothing sustainable after that to begin to replace technology at the rapid rate of, of our implementation of technology, right? So as we need more to replace Chromebooks, as we need to replace staff computers, as we need to replace these monitors here, what is it from a sustainable technology source could we hit upon versus it not being a foundation and a fund?
Okay, so meaning our?
General, general funds.
All right. Okay, I guess the reason why I was kind of thick on that is because, you know, at some point down the line, we may have limited general funds. So that's, that was by, that was why I was having some difficulty.
So as that grant goes away and as those funds come away, if it's not replaced and there's nothing there sustaining this for time beyond it, it's going to fall on us to encumber to make some decisions around what we actually purchase with technology.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And just one other thing, just, and this is just sort of the method. I had mentioned this to the preview team. One of the, and we had talked about this at the Big Five Conference last year about with regard to transportation and advocating for the Point Five is that we go to those legislators who may be right on the edge or even those that may be adamant opposed, but we take our case to those because we're already, we, we already have advocates for, for this in our community and others in the state. And so if, because this has been on the, on our list for a very long time, probably around 2007 or so. And so I think the next step, as I talked about it at the Big, the Big Five Conference, is that we go to those who've been opposed to it and see if we can help to persuade them to vote in favor of it. Thank you, Commissioner.
Any other comments? Commissioner Griffin?
Just a little, just want to go over the English reading, learning, ELL, excuse me, ELLs. I apologize. Now, with the additional funding that, that is proposed here, you say seeking for the family seeking asylum, additional funding is required to support them as, as much as possible to support additional bilingual teachers, translators, and support services. Those bilingual teachers will come, will they also include the Somali and the Swahili, all those different languages as well? Or is just, is it just, is it just the, is it just the Spanish? Or what, what, what are we dealing, what are we dealing with when we're saying the additional bilingual teachers? Because we have a slew of Somali residents here, too. So I want to make sure that we're covering our bases. Is that what it's including? We have, is it including all languages?
Yep, I'm just, it is, it's supporting every English language learner, right? You know, so what we're asking for is an increase in the amount of money provided by the state for every English language learner. So when you have, when you have. So when you have, when you start to do foundation aid formulas, right? There's formulas for students, right? A student with disability, an English language learner. So what we're asking for is an additional funding for English language learners to help support some of the asylum seekers, some of those, all those additional costs that we're seeing. That's what we're asking for in this legislative priority.
Okay, question. Do you know, in numbers and figures, how many translators we have for the African language, for Swahili, and the other seven or nine languages that are currently in, in the Rochester area for the people that live in the city of Rochester, primarily over in like the 25th District? Do we know? Because there's, there's a lot of people that I know that, that have a language barrier here with English, and they are from the African descent, and they're having trouble as well. So I'm just trying to make sure we're covering all avenues, because that's a concern of mine.
Yeah, absolutely. So we use, we have translators that we have in a budget, right, to help translate with all, all language, the five major languages, right? We also utilize technology where we can. One of the platforms we're using right now for family letters home, it's called S-MOR. S-MOR is translated into, oh, how many languages? I'm going to look at my communication, chief of communications, how many languages S-MOR translates into?
Over 100 languages are translated via S-MOR, which is our family newsletter. We are also utilizing other technologies, specifically with our texting, when we're texting families. If a family has selected a language of choice, anytime they receive a communication from us, it will come in one of the top four languages, which is Arabic, Nepali, Somali, and Spanish. We do have Swahili translators, and we do through RIA have a number of translators who will assist us during the time of an emergency to share messaging with families. That usually happens through video as well.
Okay, you know, with that being said, we, we have a, you know, we're trying to increase our numbers within our CSD, and there's a lot of kids that are not in school because there is a language barrier and they can't read. And to my point of knocking on the door and saying, hey, can we, you need, you need help, these are the things that we can make, we can do to increase our numbers if we have those translators and those teachers available to those, to those group of people that are not able to understand the English language. That's why I asked it. Thank you.
Do we have any other comments, questions, any ideas, aspirations, dreams? No? Okay. I just want to just make a couple, a couple comments through, through some of the things that I noticed while looking at the proposed legislative priorities. I think that it's important that when we speak about solutions on suspensions, that we do stick with, and we ensure that we're being very clear that, that we are supporting the Assembly Bill. The Assembly and the Senate Bill are two different bills, and we have to make sure that we are on the right side of the fight. And that Assembly Bill aligns with some of the goals and the values that we have, you know, as a board and as a district. I also want to, to ensure that, that we are focusing on, on the charter school conversation. We did speak about it a little bit up here, but, you know, as we go, go to sit down with the staff and the team, you know, just something that, that we have to, to keep on top of our mind. We are also trying to stay at around 10 priorities. So I, what I believe what happened at the next meeting is, is outcome with proposed, I mean, we're going to have to cut it down to 10. But then also, let's remember that, that, you know, we, we have to look at, you know, our legislative agenda and ensure that we are advocating on a personal level also, you know, as commissioners for our district, to, to ensure that, that we are, you know, putting accountability and action behind the, the agenda that we're creating. And there's many ways to do that, and, and I'll keep you guys updated, you know, as we have more conversation on that. But if there is no other comment, question, dreams, or aspirations, can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned.
We're serving.
About the survey, I hope you guys fill it out well, you know.
So I, I do.
Tell them to check yes with the chairperson.
Check yes, second.
I just want to put something out there to the, to the public. So there was, as we face technology, right? We see a little bit of more, some creativity by our students.
He adjourned the meeting already?
It's kind of adjourned.
Oh, shoot, okay.
Dan, you should, you should let me know.
We all said aye, I think, yeah.
But I don't think we all said aye.
We didn't say aye yet. We didn't say aye yet.
Open on the floor. I thought we all said aye.
The motion is open, yes. The deal's right, we didn't say aye.
I just want, so as we approach weather, as we approach technology, I see that sometimes we get a little creative. And I recently saw an email that went out to Monroe High School saying that school is closed tomorrow. So I appreciate people's creative thinking. School closures will come from the district. It'll be posted on our district website. It will come via a communication on, through the district. It will not come from an email, just to one school. So I appreciate seeing all of the Monroe students at school tomorrow at the start of the day. So thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned.